We'll call this meeting of the Mayor and Board of Commissioners for October the 23rd, 2018 to order. We stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A roll call, please, Calvin.
Yes. Commissioner Braun?
Yeah.
Commissioner Pearson?
Here.
Commissioner Warnock?
Present.
Vice Mayor Arthurreath?
Here.
Let the record reflect that all but Mayor Marion are in attendance and he has an excused absence for work.
Okay. We'll do a moment of silence tonight with prayer that the mayor usually does. Just remember everything that's going on in our world today, that we're getting ready to come up on Halloween. We want to make sure that everybody stays safe, our schools are safe, our borders are safe, all of our law enforcement, first responders, everybody stays safe. Let's remember all of them for a moment tonight. Okay, thank you. Let's move on with public presentations. Tonight, we have our candidate for Maryland Senate District 35, Frank Esposito here. Frank, you want to come up to the podium and introduce yourself? And like I said, we're on video tonight. Sorry, we don't have a big crowd here tonight, but we have a lot of viewers that will watch and good to see you here tonight.
It's great to be here. Good evening, everyone. I appreciate the opportunity. I want to thank the town of Rising Sun and the mayor's office, the commissioners and the town administrator for allowing me some mic time tonight. I appreciate it. Let just introduce myself once again for who don't know me. Frank Esposito. I live in Rising Sun. Been there for 14 years. Live at the Chantilly Manor, right down the street from y'all. Been in Cecil County for the last 35 years. I'm a Marine Corps veteran, had two sons in the Marine Corps. I'm retired, I'm Maryland State Trooper, 25 years, now with the Transportation Authority Police for the last 10 years, and I'm assigned to the Hayden Bridge Detachment down in Perryville, covering Hartford and Cecil County. I just wanted to come here tonight and express my gratitude, feel, you know, your support and I really appreciate all the support I've been given from the town, residents here and everyone involved. I'm running for state senate and have a lot of good things on tap for us. Big on school security, want to make sure all our schools are safe and secure, making sure we have a school resource officer in every school in our state, including elementary schools. Big on opioid crisis, was a former member of the Hartford County Drug Task Force, Cecil County Drug Task Force and DEA Task Force, did a lot of undercover work here in the county. Worked undercover for like six years. So I want to really attack the opioid crisis in a big way. I think I believe my background absolutely is tailor-made for the opioid crisis that we have in front of us. I'm big on rehabilitation, want to make sure that, you know, our citizens have the opportunity to get inpatient counseling, inpatient help. We need some funding for that and some big-time funding for behavioral health. Big on our Second Amendment. Going around to my constituents, they want somebody who's strong and firm on protecting our Second Amendment and I'm your man for the Second Amendment. Big on property taxes, reduction in property taxes for senior citizens. I'd like to propose some legislation to give our seniors a 50% tax reduction in their property tax. If you're 65 years or older, live in Maryland, you're primary residence, you've been there for 10 years, you're up to date on your taxes, I believe you should have a 50% property tax cut in the form of a tax break at the end of the year when you file your state taxes. We need to take care of our seniors, we need to take care of our veterans. As I said, I'm a Marine Corps veteran myself, had two sons in the Marine Corps. I served our nation, I served our state 35 years, I've served our counties. I was a former Maryland Troopers Association President for Hartford and Cecil County. I was the Public Relations Chairman for the State of Maryland, for the Maryland Troopers Association, and once I did a lot of lobbying for better pay, benefits and working conditions for the troopers and other law enforcement officers. I'm the, one of the founding fathers of the State Law Enforcement Officers Labor Alliance, Leola. I'm also, also had a, in the Cecil College, under my direct leadership, formed a scholarship, which is now an endowment, under Joseph T. Landzey Scholarship and Endowment now. And we also had the Circle Dunn with the State Highway Administration up in Cherry Hill, Joseph T. Landzey Circle. We did a lot of good things when I was a president and had a lot of exposure in Annapolis. I want to continue my service as your state senator. I want to be your senator. I think I can do a lot of great things. I will be very accessible to the town, very accessible to the citizens and you all. So please, continue your support for me and I thank you once again for having me tonight. Thank you very much. God bless you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming out tonight.
And may I be excused?
Anybody have any questions?
Yeah. If you post that video.
I think Calvin has something, Frank.
Yes, Calvin.
Yeah, I guess I wanted to take the opportunity to maybe give a little bit more insight in some of the needs of the town of Rising Sun and how the state legislature can play a major role in helping us. You know, to give you an example, we always hear the word unfunded mandates that come down and just to sort of give you a snapshot, the town of Rising Sun has 900 taxable properties in it. The bulk of how we provide services to our residents is through the real estate tax. And we have been in a sewer and water moratorium for probably pretty close to 15 years or so, which means we've had no opportunity to grow our community and it also trickles down to the point where you don't get really any new investments in the community because no one could build something new and better than, that's familiar in other communities because there's no sewer and water for allocation. So we've become stale and stagnant to some degree from a revenue standpoint. We have seen, to give you an example, in 2010, the town was at the apex, I'm sorry, in 2008, the town was at the apex of its real estate values in the community. The total real estate value was $236 million. About two years ago, that dollar amount had dropped down to about $165 million. And so when you calculate the real estate tax rate, that's a huge loss of revenue for the community. So we have been balancing budgets over the last couple of years at like five, six, $10,000 so pluses. And any good business or even a household, you're always supposed to have like a year or year and a half worth of resources in case you lose your job or your business hits a downturn. We don't come anywhere near close to doing that. So when we balance our budget at five, $10,000, that's it. We've got to watch every penny that comes in here. So when the state comes along with unfunded mandates in the sense of the stormwater management and the MS4, they're basically, it's a valuable thing, it needs to be done to protect the environment, but they're basically putting the responsibility on small municipalities. And so you're talking about hiring people, spending, you know, thousands and thousands of dollars coming in to comply and a community like ours just doesn't have that. So I've always said that we are a little town with big town or big city problems. The disadvantage we have is when you're in a community that has, let's take a city or a third-class city in population, and if you take that city that might have eight, nine, 10 different departments of multiple employees in it, when a $50,000 increase expense comes along, maybe you modify some personnel, maybe you have to eliminate a job, but you have plenty of people to still fix the potholes, plow the streets in the wintertime and do stuff. Here, a $50,000 increase can mean we're not plowing snow, we're not fixing potholes. And so the effects on a small community are magnified 100 times worse than a larger community. Another example for you to keep in mind is because of environmental regulations and failing well systems and failing sewer systems, our 900 taxable properties have $26 million worth of infrastructure financing that it has to pay over the next 40 years. With, we're very grateful for the assistance that we get from the federal government and some assistance that we get from their state government, but it pales in comparison to the impact on our residents. And so it becomes a trickle-down reverse economics because the sewer and water rates are so high to pay for these environmental issues that it gets, it becomes tough to get somebody to want to invest new dollars in the community to grow your real estate tax and create new and exciting things for the community. We are a community that takes pride in doing the right thing. To give you an example, we put the new water line in from Pennsylvania, which is a very novel, outside-the-box way of solving the water issues. We, our elected body of good conscience, made the decision to put hydrants in county areas even though they're not protecting any Rising Sun residents at all. And so the taxpayers of Rising Sun are paying for those hydrants at about $60,000 to $70,000. We're not really getting the support from the county that we would like to have financially. It's benefiting their residents, it's lowering their homeowner's insurance because now there's hydrants out there, it's increasing the value of their properties because there's hydrants in public water out there. So despite the financial difficulties, I'm proud to say that our elected body in the past and now presently and in the future, we always do the right thing simply because it's the right thing to do, but we need to get people on the state level, maybe giving us a little more credit for doing that and helping us along the way. And I'll leave you with this, I like the term unintended consequences. And if county and state officials as providing municipal services gets more robust and more expensive to do, the unintended consequences, if the higher-ups don't pay attention to it, the unintended consequences is communities like Rising Sun dry up on the vine and you start to have problems financially. So I just wanted to leave you with that, you know, that those are real important issues for communities like the town of Rising Sun and others that are in the same paradigm. So I just wanted to give you that.
I can tell you this, as your state senator, I would closely work with y'all and I would be involved in the community constantly. You have a friend in Annapolis with Frank Esposito, I can tell you that, who would sit down with you at meetings like this in the future and we would come together as a team and work things out. And I would do my utmost to support y'all, try to find additional funding for y'all and do everything I can for Cecil and Hartford County. Absolutely. You have a friend right here.
Anybody else? Good. Thank you, Frank. Appreciate you coming in tonight and telling us about yourself and good luck in the election, which is just a couple of weeks away. And highway user funds, we need that, keep fighting for that, too.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for having me.
Thank you.
State aid, police protection.
Absolutely, chief.
You know we have...
Let's just keep going down the list.
Chair problems.
Yes, we need some additional chairs.
That's the protection I think we might want to concentrate on.
Safety is first.
Thanks.
Not the same type of chair.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, Frank, we have Frank in here? Good. Tom, you have anything for us tonight before we move into other business that you want to update us on?
The only thing is we are finalizing the traffic plan that we had been presenting and talked to Calvin about. We're finalizing some of the things that he had us change and so looking forward to presenting that.
Good, good. Thank you. Okay, so we'll move into business meeting items.
I'm going to have you advise.
Resolution 2018-06, Town Clerk. Calvin, you're putting forward these.
Generally, this is just a housekeeping issue. The town charter does provide for a town clerk, which basically is the official keeper of the records of the town. It is the entity that is supposed to sign off and verify that the ordinances are properly kept and managed. I have had the pleasure of serving on it as an interim basis for the last couple of years because of, you know, the turnover that we have had and some changes in how we have provided services. And now that we're bringing staffing, good qualified staffing back in-house, it's time to separate the duties between the town administrator and the town clerk the way they rightfully should be done. So this is basically just a resolution appointing Judy Melton, our current office manager as the town clerk. So we have the standard boilerplate language at the beginning. I'll start on the fourth whereas. The code of ordinances of the town contains Chapter 2 titled Administration of Government, which establishes the general guidelines associated with the proper administration of affairs and businesses for the town of Rising Sun, Maryland, in accordance with the town charter and other applicable federal and state laws. And whereas this chapter contains Article 2 titled Organization of Government, which establishes the various departments and positions that handle the day-to-day administration of the town government under the auspices of the mayor and commissioners. Whereas this article contains Section 2-204 titled Administrative Positions Established, which establishes the responsibilities and duties of the position of clerk for the town of Rising Sun. And whereas this article also contains various subsections that contain the language referencing the town clerk. And whereas the position of town clerk serves as the clerk to the Board of Commissioners and is charged with the duties of recording secretary, document filing, records management and custodian of all of the official town seal. And whereas these duties are integral to the legal and legislative process of providing town government. And whereas the town administrator, Mr. Calvin A. Barnaburger Jr., has been serving as the acting town clerk due to a vacancy in the position. And whereas the mayor and commissioners recently filled the position of office manager with the town of Rising Sun and have now determined to officially assign the duties of clerk to the Board of Commissioners, recording secretary, document filing, records management and custodian of the official town seal to the town's office manager, Judy Melton. Now therefore be it further resolved that the mayor and commissioners of the town of Rising Sun pass, approved and adopted this resolution on the 23rd day of October 2018.
Thank you, sir. Can we get a motion?
I make a motion.
Second.
That we approve Judy, or we approve Resolution 28, 2018-06.
Second. Okay. It's been moved to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? It's unanimous? Okay. Calvin, you want to move on into Resolution 2018-07, Vehicle Leasing?
Yeah, this is another sort of normal operating resolution that the company that we lease vehicles from requires a formal resolution of the elected body to enter into the lease agreement. One of the reasons why the town has been able to keep its fleet up and current of both police cars and public works vehicles is that we don't go out and shell out $40,000, $50,000 apiece for these vehicles. We lease them with the right to own, depending upon the lease agreement, from anywhere from five, seven or 10 years, depending upon the type of equipment. So this is just a requirement of the leasing company to pass a resolution. Now the leasing company gives you a resolution that they want you to adopt. I don't like using that resolution, we never have, because I want our resolutions to continue to be uniform and follow the same manner. So this is going to be the third leasing agreement that we have entered into over the last three years and we've always used our own resolution to satisfy the leasing company. So again, the beginning of the document is a boilerplate. I'm going to start on the third whereas Section C-16 of the town charter titled General Powers of Town, Note 2, titled Specific Powers, Subnote 17, titled Finances, grants the town commissioners with the specific powers of general management and control of the finances of the town. And whereas the mayor and commissioners has determined that a true and very real need exists for the acquisition of replacement police vehicles and upgraded equipment for the town of Rising Sun. And is described on Exhibit A of Schedule Number 2 to the master lease purchase agreement dated as of October 15, 2018, between the town and tax-exempt leasing corporation. Whereas the mayor and commissioners after thorough research and investigation has determined that leasing these vehicles and equipment with the option to own at some point provides the best financial benefit to the town. And whereas the governing body of the town has determined that the agreement and schedule substantially in the form presented to this meeting are in the best interest of the town for the acquisition of such equipment and the governing body hereby approves the entry into the agreement and schedule by the town and hereby designates and authorizes the following person to execute and deliver the agreement and schedule on the town's behalf with such changes thereto as such persons deemed appropriate and any related documents, including any escrow agreement necessary to the consummation of the transaction contemplated by the agreement and schedule. Therefore let it be resolved that the mayor and commissioners hereby approve the entry into a contract with the leasing company and hereby designate and authorize as the town administrator, Calvin A. Barnaburger Jr., to execute and deliver the contract on the town's behalf with such changes thereto as deemed appropriate and related documents, including any escrow agreement necessary to the consummation of the transaction contemplated by the contract. And be it further resolved that the mayor and commissioners of the town of Rising Sun pass, approved and adopted the resolution on the 23rd day of October 2018. And just as a reminder, the annual payment was budgeted in the town's budget because we did have that number. The reason why we're here in October is because we could not enter into the lease agreement until we had VIN numbers for the vehicles that are being purchased and that takes a little bit of time to have that happen. So this was approved in the adopted budget.
Okay. You got to get a motion?
So moved.
Somebody got to make a move. Oh, you so moved, I'm sorry, Dave. So we got to move in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. Chief, is this the three vehicles you were waiting on?
That's my...
Good. I just want to say, you know, we appreciate the residents of the town of Rising Sun through the taxes that we all pay into the town's budget, being able to purchase the equipment we've purchased. Because without, without equipment for public works, without police cars and all the stuff they need, we can't be, these departments can't be effective in doing their jobs. So a thank you to everybody in the town of Rising Sun who have helped purchase these. And chief, thank you and your guys for taking such good care of them and providing the service you do with them.
You're welcome.
Okay, so moving on, we're going to have a discussion on the cost associated with bulk pickup of trash.
Yes.
Calvin, you have some details for us tonight?
Yes. In years past, the town of Rising Sun has put the collection of trash and recyclables out to bid. We did the first one in 2008, the second one in 2012, and then we just did the third one in 2018, earlier this year. And when we do the bids, we set it up so that we can get either a one-year contract, two-year contract, three-year contract or four-year contract. And we try to lock down the trash haulers for a four-year period to try to get the best price possible. And I think at first glance, that was probably very effective in the past because when we put the bid out this year, we saw a $58,000 increase in the cost to dispose of trash and recyclables for the town of Rising Sun. That's a fairly significant jump and I do think it's a reflection of the 2012 bid specs locking the vendor down for a four-year period. So as soon as they were able to get into a new bid situation, then they were able to reflect, maybe more reflective of today's cost. So there's, one of the other reasons for this increase is in the past, well, let me back up and say, our trash collection consists of collecting, off the top of my head, about 900 or 800, 890, I think, residential pickups. We do not provide trash collection for commercial, but we do provide it for residential. So there's about roughly 890 pickups that we do. It also consists of the yard waste that our guys go out on Mondays. We save money by having our people pick up the yard waste and they put it into 40 cubic yard dumpsters. And there's a cost associated with the hauler coming in and pulling that dumpster out. In addition, we ask for pricing for a dumpster at the firehouse, a dumpster at the Little League field, a dumpster at Diddy Richards Park, a dumpster at Veterans Park, a dumpster at the public works garage and with the, with the new wastewater treatment plant, we had to add a dumpster down there for the disposal of grit that comes through the system. So in the past, our bid specs, although they charged us for yard waste collection and the grit pickup, we got the dumpsters at Diddy Richards, Veterans, the public works garage and the fire company and Legion all free of charge. Well, they're no longer doing that. And when I, when I say what the prices are, I'm not singling out the trash hauler that we awarded it to because we put it out to bid and all three companies that bid on the project were charging for this service now. We even tried to get them to do some pro bono stuff, like we would give them, you know, free advertisement and recognition for the great event we just had for Spooktacular. Waste Management provided all those receptacles and dumpsters. We were willing to, you know, show them as part of the sponsor on it. We were willing to give them promotional banners in the downtown area free of charge if they would give us, continue to give those services for free. None of the haulers are giving it to us for free. In addition, although the total cost is a $58,000 increase, which is borne out of new charges for the fire company, all those places where we have dumpsters, there's now charges for that. What that $58,000 does not include, which is why we're having this discussion tonight, is they are no longer going to give us bulk pickup for free. And that has been a great service for our residents and if they had to get rid of a couch, a chair, a rug or something that's bulky, they could put it out for a collection on Friday as long as they notified us in advance and the trash hauler would pick that up free of charge. None of the vendors are willing to do that. And so they are now charging us $55 for each unit that is put out there. And we average probably around seven to 10 bulk pickups on a weekly basis. So that starts to get a little costly at the end of the year. And so we've, again, you heard me say in the earlier presentation, we balance our budgets with four, five, six, $7,000 so pluses. We did that last year. This year alone, we saw a $58,000 increase in the, in the removal of recyclables and garbage. We were still able to balance the budget, but we have to allocate things around and get really creative. So although we balanced it this year, I think with a $14,000 surplus, that still includes the $58,000 increase in the trash. And our budget did not cover dollar per dollar. I think we're still short about $10,000. I think we're still short about ten thousand dollars in what we actually budgeted in the budget based upon the way the prices came in. So we anticipated an increase, but we didn't anticipate this kind of increase. We did not anticipate bulk pickup either. So when you just look at it from pure economics, you balance your budget on fourteen thousand, we already are ten thousand in the negative because a trash bid came in much higher, and now we are bulk pickup on top of that. Now, we always manage to find a way to make this work every year. We, we've never entered the year, we've never gone in the red from year to year. So we do a great job of staying above water, but it gets more and more difficult. So the one question is, do you want to continue to provide the bulk pickup free of charge? Or do you want to pass along that cost to the individual who needs that bulk pickup? And that's a painful thing to propose, but another thing that should be considered is, yes, everybody pays the real estate tax and they get trash and recycling pickup. And that's even across the board. Nobody gets an advantage or a disadvantage to doing that. However, with bulk pickup, not everybody requires bulk pickup. So it's really a service charge. And if you were to not hypothetically, if the individual who needs that specific service is not paying for it, then that means everybody is paying for it whether they need the service or not. That's different than paying for trash pickup, which everybody does require in recyclables. So it just, it comes down to a fundamental question of how you want to handle that incurred expense. So that's, that's a synopsis of the discussion.
Okay, so we can have some more discussion tonight on this. And I think there's nothing we can solve tonight without hearing from some residents because I know watch, some of them watched this video, they're gonna wanna come in and, rightfully so, we should hear from some. But I guess from what Calvin's saying, the bottom line is, a service that we used to get for free is now, the, the service charge has gone up quite a bit. And if we continue this service, we're gonna have to find a way to pay for it, which could probably be an increase in a fee or a tax someplace. Or we would be changing this to where if you have a bulk pickup, you would be paying for it. If you don't have any other way for the stuff to be removed, if you can't go to the dump yourself, you can't find somebody to take it for you, or if you absolutely have no other option, you need our trash hauler to pick it up and take it, you'd be responsible because it is somewhat unfair that somebody else have to pay for, somebody who cleaned out their apartment and left everything out on the street and you gotta, we gotta pay for it. So that's kind of a, in a nutshell, our dilemma. So anybody else to weigh in tonight?
Calvin, have you done the cost analysis of, based on past bulk item picks? I know for a while now, we've been compiling a list, week after week, of bulk items. Have we done some analysis to estimate the cost?
Again, we're averaging about seven to ten per week. So I've not projected the number, but if you multiplied that over fifty-two weeks and you took the low number of seven, you know, and then if you take the high number of ten, that's what your cost would end up being.
So let, we said fifty dollars an item?
Fifty-five.
Or fifty, oh, fifty-five an item?
It's fifty-five an item.
So fifty-five times seven is three eighty-five, times fifty-two would be twenty thousand a year. Or fifty-five times?
Twenty-eight-six.
Twenty-eight-six, so somewhere from twenty to twenty-eight thousand.
Yeah.
Or to almost twenty-nine thousand.
Yeah.
And you know, we got, it, it's gotta also be said that some of this is to do with the landfill, the cost of going into the landfill has increased. I've recently taken a small utility trailer load of stuff in, and it was only fourteen dollars to go there and dump it. But then you add in what I paid for a trailer, tags, my time, gas, it could get up to almost forty, fifty dollars if you add in those factors, not just the cost, but it was fifteen dollars just to take some stuff in and unload myself. So, and that's up quite a bit from the last time I was in, it was only like five dollars. So these are where some of these costs are being accrued at, and we've gotta come up with some solution.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I'd like to clarify, the fifty-eight thousand, that's just the trash hauler's cost. That number does not reflect the disposal fees.
Right.
Now, they have not raised the cost in the last year. The only, and it's, it's unrelated to this to some degree, but it all comes out of the same piggy bank. The recyclable is set by the market, so that fluctuates. The trash is a set amount, but the recyclable fluctuate. But I wanted to be clear, that fifty-eight thousand dollars does not include the disposal costs.
And then also, we have, part of that cost is our yard waste recycle pickup in the trash?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
This, this contract we just did this summer, how many years is that for?
We, we did the same thing with a variation. In the past, we have voted to award it for a four-year period. We've locked it down. But quite frankly, I think that because the cost went up so much that what you originally adopted a couple of months ago was a one-year option. Because the contract that we entered into gives us, if we notify them, and off the top of my head, I think it's ninety days, if we notify them ninety days in advance that we're not gonna do the second-year option, we can put the entire thing out to bid. And we could do that over the preceding four-year period. So they're technically not locked into a cost, but I don't know if this cost is excessively high. If it might have been an overreaction to them having such a low cost over the, over the previous four years. So we structured this to give us options to sort of control our own destiny. So this, next May, we could do an analysis of what the other communities are being charged, and we can make a decision of notifying them that we don't wanna entertain option two and put it out to bid, again, to give us more flexibility.
Calvin, do we have an ordinance about regarding dumping of materials, just anywhere?
Yes.
We do?
Yes.
And there is a fine with that?
Yes.
Do you know right off the top of your head what the fine is?
That was something we adopted in our property maintenance code. I, I believe it's in excess of a hundred dollars.
Excess of a hundred dollars?
Yeah.
Okay. So part of the problem that, that we have discussed in, in this was that if we took this away, that people would just generally maybe consider just taking it and dumping it somewhere.
Right.
If only eight hundred and eighty people a week are following this, the majority says that they're not going to want to pay for those ten people. As much as I don't like to see it, I, I think that it becomes the responsibility of the individual property owner to dispose of their bulk trash.
Right.
I know this is just a, a comment, but for nineteen ninety-five, you can rent a truck at Home Depot, and I believe, I don't, I'm not sure what Lowe's has the same thing. So for less than what it's costing us, or we would charge potentially if we just broke even on it, they can rent a, a vehicle and dispose of it properly.
Right. So let me offer another thing.
You can, when you do that, you can, if you have several items, instead of being charged like they will for each item?
Right.
You load it all up and you take it in in one load, and it becomes a heck of a lot cheaper when you do it that way.
I, I just think from, from a simple majority standpoint, that the majority are, are not going to wanna pay?
Right.
For, for just a minority of, of, of ten people a week, at the, at the greatest of ten.
Right. So let me also offer this, because the other thing on a staff level that we contemplated, as you know, we've been saving money over the years by doing stuff in-house. But the concern about us doing it in-house is, one, the tying up of equipment and personnel. We have a four, a four-man crew. So if we didn't buy any specialty equipment to do this, we're talking about somebody operating the backhoe. Because if, if we just have our guys going around and tossing a couch, what, what are they gonna toss it into? I mean, right now, the bulk pickup is done in a trash truck that can pack sit down. And could that one truck could pick up the trash and then hypothetically pick up the bulk items too and compact them. With us, we have a five-ton dump truck that you're not gonna get two of our guys to be able to push a couch up over the top. So now you're talking about a backhoe. So on a weekly basis, if you did it that way, you're taking a five-ton dump truck and a backhoe, trying to get that wobbly item, or you're chaining it down to the backhoe so you don't get it halfway up and it falls off. And so Waste Management coming in, taking, you know, a minute or two minutes to wheel it over to a fork that throws it up in the truck. Now you're talking, what, five, ten, fifteen minutes for our guys to la, lasso off a couch to get it on a backhoe? What happens if the backhoe breaks down? It is a twenty-five-year-old backhoe. And then we talked about, well, let's get away from the five-ton dump truck and maybe we could do it in a pickup truck. Well, if you have a pickup truck, you know, you put one couch, maybe two couches in it, and you're done. And now you're taking the fifteen, twenty-minute ride down to the landfill to dump the two couches just to come back into town to go pick up two more. So that's not a good scenario. And then the third scenario was, well, maybe we go out and we buy a piece of equipment. And any equipment that we would want to get, short of getting a trash truck, would be maybe a, another five-ton dump truck, but you would need some kind of lift gate on it. And if you're familiar with lift gates, you can get lift gates to go up, but it's a different thing to have the lift gate dump. So now you're talking about a lift gate, a lift gate dumper combination. So you're talking about maybe, who knows, fifty, sixty, seventy thousand dollar upfront expenditure just to, you're, you're still, you're just breaking even with, with no charge. With no charge, you're, you're, you're still not even breaking even on it. And then you have the issue of, I, Mr. or Mrs. Resident gets some family members together, they drag the couch out to the curb on Friday, nobody wants to haul that back up to the house, but our guys had a water main break. Or one guy got sick and we're short manpower. Now the couch is sitting out there for two or three days and it's raining if it's winter time. What's the priority, picking up the, the bulk pickup or salting the road and plowing the street? So at least for the immediate time period, we're not really in a position to come up with a good solution other than to continue to have Waste Management do it and absorb the cost completely. Or have Waste Management do it on a case-by-case basis, and the resident knows they have to pay the fifty-five dollars. Or tell some combination of Waste Management doesn't do it, period, and the homeowner has to get it in a pickup truck, a trailer, whatever, and go dispose of it. So that's sort of a synopsis of, we've really kicked it around to try to come up with the best solution. And we're just not in a good position right now to come up with something that's sustainable right now. Maybe in the future we can, but right now, we're not.
You wanna move on, discuss this, some more, more input?
I mean, the only other option would be possibly, just throw it out there, would be, what about a dumpster where people could bring it, or eventually it might even be something where we could, you know, take it to the dumpster. We have a dumpster on one of our sites where one or two days a week, people could drop things off. And then we could have the dumpster hauled off, might be another option worth looking for.
Right. Well, let me, the, the dumpster pickup right now is about two hundred and fifty dollars per dumpster. So keep that, I'm not saying that necessarily.
You can get a lot more than five items in a dumpster, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Let's move on, staff reports, chief.
Do we need to support the podium? I'll try not to fall again.
It's not gonna let you live that down, is it?
They've got pictures. Good evening, commissioners, Mr. Vice Mayor. During the period, we had one hundred and sixty-six calls for service. There were no notable trends. Each year, officers have to have sixteen hours of in-service training. We've completed our sixteen hours. And this year, I wanted the officers to be better trained. So each officer averaged thirty-six hours of training, in addition to the firearms training and so forth. What, the purpose of that is to educate them more on what new laws are coming about, what new practices that police officers are using to make them a better police department here in town, uh, better police officers here in town. The department as a whole should improve, and I, I hope it does improve. We also attended the Citizens Fire Company of Rising Sun's open house. There was a light showing, but those that did attend were pleasantly surprised at the capabilities of our department and the capabilities of our officers. So we got a lot of positive comments out of that. Myself and Town Administrator Bonnberger attended the pipeline awareness training. Most people realize we have a pipeline that comes through here, but they don't understand what it is. It is a natural gas line, and that could be very hazardous at times if you don't understand what it is.
It's a high pressure.
It's a high pressure, yes, line. We also discussed incidents, like the bridges being closed to Harford County. It's a BG&E line. So any service is gonna be coming from the western part of the state. And if we had an event where the wind caused ninety-five, forty, and some parts of Route One to close, we should be prepared here in the county to deal with that. And that training brought to light some of the issues we face, and hopefully we can overcome those issues and be better prepared for it. I also attended the homecoming, passing of the ton, the spirit stick, with the mayor, Marion. Again, that event's always something that gets you charged up, riled up, and ready to go for the homecoming at Rising Sun High School. Lastly, we assisted with Spooktacular, and that's not blast, but we assisted with Spooktacular. And in an estimate, the crowd that attended Spooktacular rivals that of our bigger events with the Color Fun Run. And as a police chief, I took pride in the fact that we had one incident, and that was a lady that had a medical incident, and beyond that, nothing. That shows how well that event was run, planned, and how well the citizens are in this area. Lastly, Halloween is next Wednesday. Trick or Treat is from six to eight. It'll be dark around that time, so be prepared with lights on your children, make sure your children stay away from the roadways, and get out, have fun, but be prepared that there's traffic, there's people that don't see very well that still drive, be prepared. Just be prepared because it will be dark. We will be out and about assisting as we normally do during that, that event. With that being said, that's the end of my report.
Thank you, sir.
Unless we have questions.
Chief, I just, you and I did get a chance to follow up on this today, but there is sort of an internet hysteria going around and we've been asked the question of, is there an age limit for trick-or-treating? Apparently, there are some communities out in the country that are getting a lot of attention right now because they've actually made it a crime for children over the age of twelve, thirteen, depending where you're at, to be trick-or-treating. And believe it or not, they can face, what, up to six months in jail for being too old to trick-or-treat. And chief, if you just wanna emphasize, we do not have.
We do not have that? You said children.
Yes.
Although they're sixteen, they're not adults, they're not over eighteen. And if you have an eighteen-year-old that shows up at your house and wants to trick-or-treat, it's your choice to do them what you wanna do. But it's not illegal here in Rising Sun. If they're not causing a problem, have fun. If they're not causing a problem, have fun.
Yep.
And we're not going to be one of those communities that change Halloween from, you know, October 31st to November 2nd, or October 27th.
Halloween's Halloween.
Halloween's Halloween.
Only if we get a, the one year we did because we had, what, like the...
Bad weather or something, yeah.
... Sandy or something came through.
That was the only time we've actually had to switch it.
And that's the smart thing to do at that time anyways.
That's the safe thing to do.
Chief, do you have an estimate of how many people were here Saturday for Spooktacular?
Approximately 4,500 is our, our estimate.
Wow. Also, do you have a place for the outhouse to be set?
Your house.
Yeah. Yep. Thank you, chief. Calvin, do you have anything under administrators?
Yeah, I just wanted to say it once again, that the town is instituting a once-a-month hydrant flushing for the areas of Reynolds, Cooper, um, and Buckle. We just wanted to remind everybody that we will be doing that the first Monday of every month, um, to try to get ahead of the brown water issues over there.
First Monday, you say, first Monday of each month?
First Monday of every month, we'll be flushing, uh, the hydrants in that area. At the last meeting, the chief always does a great job of highlighting the efforts of his police officers, and at the last couple meetings, we have highlighted the great efforts of the Public Works Department. I wanted to make sure that we're not leaving the office staff out. They have been doing some great things also, especially in the utility billing. Um, the residents may, might not see that or might not understand it, but it's exciting to us, because we are improving customer service, and we're eliminating a lot of glitches in the system. Um, we've upgraded the utility billing system, and we found, um, we found a lot of robust areas of the system that were not being properly utilized, and the new system is giving us even, uh, greater areas. So, in the past, we would have what is termed as meter exceptions, which are basically issues between the tower that, uh, asks for the reed and the remote reed and the, in the meter itself. And we would have 150, 200 of them a month, that in the past, our staff or the people managing it would, would have no idea what it was. Judy, Linda, and Deanna have done a great job of going into each one of those issues and tracking down all the details with the help of the Public Works Department, where we have found meters that are not, uh, corresponding with the remote reed on the outside, um, which quite frankly, has been a, a loss of revenue for the town over the years. We have, uh, it's sort of worked out both ways. We, we've had some, uh, remote reeds that have not been operating properly, and it's just, it's, it's really good when you get good staff, the, that's enthusiastic and really loves working on this kinda stuff. So, the residents might not necessarily see that translation, but internally, we're really excited about what they've been doing. So I just wanted to acknowledge Judy, Linda, and Deanna.
Thank you. And yes, they, they do do a great job for us and for the residents. Okay, so we'll move into Commissioners' comments. Commissioner Pearson?
I have a letter to read to the board tonight. Dear Mayor and Commissioners of Rising Sun, I would like to take this time to voice my concerns about the blocking of the intersection in front of Town Hall at Pearl Street and North Queen Street. I have noticed an increasing amount of vehicles blocking this intersection in the recent months. There is no posted sign there to signal people to stop and leave the intersection clear. This is a safety hazard, because it makes it difficult for drivers to see around the vehicles in the intersection. It also, at times, prohibits vehicles from coming through the main intersection and making a left onto Pearl Street from being able to pass. In addition to my regular travels in my personal vehicle, I travel this intersection in an emergency, emergency vehicle while both working and volunteering. I have had several incidents where this intersection has been blocked and delayed my response, because I was unable to get through. This is, once again, a safety hazard for all drivers, because most do not know how to react when an emergency vehicle is behind them and cannot proceed because of them. I understand that there is nothing the town can do about that, but if they were not blocking the intersection in the first place, this situation could be avoided. They also have limited places to move their vehicles in these types of situations. Once again, if they were not in the intersection, it would not be an issue. It is my understanding that there used to be signs posted to prevent this from happening. If that is the case, why were they removed, and was this being enforced by the Police Department? The city of Baltimore just implemented a "Don't Block the Box" initiative in an effort to keep their intersections from being blocked by vehicles. I also know that Philadelphia, New York, and Washington DC have a similar initiative. And although these cities are much longer, much larger than the town of Rising Sun, it clearly shows that there is some importance to the concept of keeping intersections clear of vehicles for both regular traffic to get through and for emergency vehicles. This would also have to be enforced, as I understand that this intersection cannot be the primary concern of the officers working. However, when they are at Town Hall and are not busy with their other duties, how much effort would it take to monitor the intersection for 10 minutes to ensure it is not blocked? The fine in Baltimore is $125 per offense. In Philadelphia, their, their policy is available online, is provided below. 12-409 penalty, any person violating any of the provisions of Chap- Chapter 12, 400, for which no penalty is provided in the vehicle code shall, upon summary conviction, before a magistrate, pay a fine of $10, together with cost of prosecution, except that the fine for the violation of the provisions of Section 12-407 shall be the maximum amount permitted, permitted by law. I would like to see action taken in an effort to make this intersection safer for all parties on the road, and I think it is possible by the posting of signs and some enforcement. This will make traffic flow and pedestrian flow easier to navigate and less chance for accidents to occur. It will also leave the intersection clear for emergency vehicles to navigate and make their travels more efficient. I truly look forward to he, either hearing from the town regards in this issue or see action taken. If there are any questions or to discuss concerns further, please do not hesitate to contact me via my cell or my email. These, uh, these statements and concerns in no way represent the views of my place of employment or volunteering. They are strictly my concerns as a town resident. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, a concerned town resident, Joshua Pearson. This, uh, this is an issue that has been going around for many years, okay? Unfortunately, he's right.
It's unusual for him, right?
Uh, yeah. Well, no, not really, but, uh, it's just, coming in here tonight, I watched the same thing happen. And we have, we're, we're going to have to address the issue. We did at one time have signs, uh, however, we had some issues with, uh, the signs and their, their placement. Maybe we will have to look at, look at that again. Chief, you and I'll get together, if you don't mind, and we'll come up with a solution or several solutions to present to the board. But, I thank you for letting me read that letter and understanding that there is a problem. That's all of my report tonight.
Commissioner Brolin, you have anything tonight?
I have nothing tonight.
Okay. Commissioner Warnock, I think you have a lot tonight.
I, I have a little bit. The, uh, first of all, the mayor asked me to, um, read this. He said, uh, please send, well, he said, uh, he'd like to send his sincere thanks to the donors, sponsors, and vendors without, uh, who this event, being Spooktacular, uh, would not be possible. Thank you to Pleasant View Baptist Church for their army of volunteers. Thank you for Ride to Life for their two, for the two spectacular shows and bringing a great message. Thank you to Chief Peterson, Rising Sun Police Department, our town staff, Public Works crews, um, for all making, all, for all their help in making Spooktacular successful every year. Uh, thank you. Last but not least, thank you to our Board of Commissioners. Thank you for trusting me, volunteering your time, and for supporting, supporting Spooktacular, even when I came to you with crazy ideas. Uh, and then, uh, big thanks to Commissioner Warnock, no, I'm kidding, I made that part up. And he said he can't wait till next year, so, uh, that was from Travis. He's, uh, as we know, traveling somewhere far and exotic, I'm sure. Actually, it's London, it's probably rainy and cold, but, um...
I don't know, the picture he, he sent earlier showed it was rather nice in London.
So, uh, we, trying to think, uh, so, we actually had another scout project start, uh, this week, actually, one touring Spooktacular, as a matter of fact. Uh, the Gaga Pit over at Veterans Community Park has started. Uh, they've actually got most of it nearly completed. It's probably, um, actually, I got a text earlier saying, pretty much all you gotta do is put down the, the artificial turf and do some backfill and such. They've, uh, completed the structure, they waterproof the side, so, um, it's, it, I'm sure he'll probably be in sometime in November or at the very la, I'm guessing November, but the very latest December to do the presentation of kind of the as-built. Uh, we moved it down a little bit from the original plan up by the cabin. It's actually closer to the road. But it's, um, if you can think of coming straight off of the pedestrian bridge that crosses the stream in the center of the park, if you go straight across from the bridge towards the driveway, and if you imagine a path up through there, or a future path, as it may be, uh, it'll be just to the right side of that path. So it, it's actually right along the...
Won't flood out, will it?
No, it's up along the tree line. So we, uh, put it up, we kept it up as far, actually, it's probably higher up than it would've been in the other location. The other location was a kind of dip in that area, where it's more subject to flooding than where we put it.
We know where the floodline is with all that rain we've had the past couple of years.
Well, that said, we haven't had any flooding since we did the stream bed restoration, um, even with all the rain we've had this year, but, uh, and all the stormwater management practices and techniques we've recently put in. But the, uh, that said, I, I have the map of the 100 and 500-year flood plans and all of that, and it, it doesn't go up anywhere near as high as that on that side. It's actually higher on the other side, so, um, with, uh, once that's completed, and eventually, once we have the, uh, walking path in on that side, then we'll actually put a little section of stone from the walking path over to the entrance of the, the Gaga Pit. So it, uh, looks pretty good. We, uh, big, uh, actually, I appreciate, uh, Public Works came over Friday real quick and, uh, took a skid loader in about half an hour and, uh, probably saved them about a week's worth of digging, so it was, uh, rather than them digging all of that by hand, we were able to get a little bit started for them, so that all they had to do was come in and kind of clean it up and flatten it out. So, um, I actually think that's all I have for tonight.
Please acknowledge who the scout is doing this.
Oh, yeah, it's, uh, Taylor House, who actually came in, I believe it was the end of September or the beginning of October. It was one or two meetings ago, he came in and presented what he was putting together. And, um, uh, we actually, uh, he's actually, um, there's some, i- i- his grandmother's health is failing, so he's been, we've been trying to help him, you know, get it along as quickly as possible. We've even reached out on a couple of, uh, sponsors to help, uh, get the funding moved along a little faster, so that, you know, they could get it all completed in time for, uh, make sure that she could attend the ceremony. Excuse me. And, uh, I think that's pretty much all I have for tonight.
Yeah, the House family has done a lot of work with you down in that park this year. I really appreciate it, so I wanna make sure...
Actually, between both parks, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, just a couple of things on my end. I mean, we attended a lot of events last week on behalf of the town, myself, Calvin, and Commissioner Warnock. Uh, but, wanna make sure that we say a big congratulations to Mayor Marion for his fifth, uh, Fall Festival Spooktacular. Uh, this was his brainchild, and yes, every year, he comes up with something that scares us, and it, but it's been hugely successful. So, good work, Travis. Uh, everybody looks forward to it. There was a big crowd, a lot of free pumpkins and everything for everybody, pony rides. One thing I do wanna say, 'cause I, I heard a, a negative comment, uh, about the lack of food trucks. But you had walking distance to Sue's Restaurants, Rise and Grind, and Bigfoot Subs and Pizza in town. So, we, we wanna make sure that we're, uh, we have our local businesses involved, and we're not taking anything away from him. If it was a long walk to those restaurants, I can understand it, but they were right there. I saw the Ride to Life guys down at Bigfoot's, and of course, the other businesses did good that day, too. And we want that to also benefit the town when we have an event like that, which is kind of like our, our Sun Fest in the fall. So, once again, congratulations, Mayor Marion, on another successful event. He puts his heart and soul in this thing, uh, stresses out like crazy, uh, but he did a great job. And, and thank you to our Police Department, our Public Works, the town staff, uh, my fellow Commissioners, I saw everybody there working, too, all the volunteers and all the sponsors that have made this thing very successful, uh, again. So, um, that's all I have, so I wanna move into some upcoming special events. We have a, uh, special town meeting coming up on Saturday, November the 3rd, at 10:00 a.m. It's two weeks on a Saturday morning. We wanna do this out on, uh, the front steps, and then join us over at, uh, Rise and Grind for a meet and greet, uh, with the mayor and Commissioners. Uh, we have a Planning Commission workshop Monday, November 5th, at 6:30 p.m. Uh, our next town meeting Tuesday, November 13th, at 7:00 p.m. here on the third floor. Another Planning Commission workshop Monday, November 19th, at 6:30 p.m. here on the third floor. And then, a town meeting on Tuesday, November 27th, 7:00 p.m. Under upcoming events, should I hold number B for the mayor to announce? You think? I, I agree.
One thing, uh, 'cause he asked me specifically to put it on there to just give people a heads up.
Okay, go ahead and announce it.
'Cause he doesn't have the time yet.
Go ahead, Dave, go ahead and follow, uh, you go announce that tonight, what's going on here.
Yeah, well, it's a little different, so, we have...
Ah, we're throwing a twist at you, Mayor Marion's mixing it up.
So, traditionally, the town has had a Christmas carol, uh, on the first Tuesday of, uh, of December. And the thing, the challenge we've been having over the last few years is, it seems to always rain on the Christmas carol. I think the last three or four years, it's actually rained every single year.
Been raining at Christmas.
Yeah, the one year, we actually, we actually started off in the church, it stopped raining, so we walked up to, uh, somebody's house, I don't remember who it was, and, uh, we caroled up into town and then back to the church. I mean, it's, but it, it's been pretty consistently raining every year, so that has presented a challenge with the tree lighting. Fortunately, the chief has not been electrocuted in the process of plugging the tree in the last few years.
I was the one that plugged it in last year.
Well, yeah, because we, we didn't wanna take a chance, and three times seems like just too many, too many chances with the chief, so...
Yeah, he falls down to his chair anyway.
We figured, we figured Augie, you know, he...
Hey, Dave.
The old, leave it to the old guy.
Yeah, exactly. Augie's had a good run, you know? We're willing to sacrifice Augie, no kidding. But, um, in, uh, all seriousness, the, uh, so we, we're actually trying something a little different this year. Uh, we're actually on this, on, uh, Saturday, December 1st, I don't know exactly what time yet, but, uh, I would assume somewhere right around dark, uh, we are going to have a town Christmas tree lighting. So the Christmas tree that we have out here next to the, uh, pavilion will be, uh, lit on December 1st, which, uh, number one, it allows us to light it a little bit earlier, so we're not waiting till...
Trying to light it in the rain.
Yeah, it's the middle of the first week of December, and also, we, yeah, as, hopefully if it...
A Saturday, we hope.
Get more people to attend. And if it does rain, then we can reschedule it to a day where it's not raining, or, or whatever, we'll figure that out at that point.
And I think the mayor, uh, also said we're gonna have a more spectacular Christmas tree this year. That's always donated by a couple of local vendors that we have, so, um, once again, there's Mayor Marion, mixing it up a little bit.
Chris Wiggins has been, and Chaz Blanford, I believe, have been the two that have been really big and instrumental... have been really big and instrumental in the Christmas tree over the last few years. And, uh, I think Chris wants to, wants to see a bigger and more decorated tree, and that's, uh, music to the mayor's ears, so...
Yeah. So, adjust, budget adjustment amendment for the mayor, uh, the mayor's Christmas tree lighting decorations in order?
Uh, we budgeted for a forty-seven foot tall tree, so as long as he keeps it under that.
So, we got two special events coming up.
When it falls over on Town Hall.
November third, uh, ten a.m. Saturday morning, our special town meeting, uh, and it's to vote to lift the building moratorium Calvin talked about earlier, been in place for fifteen years. And then, of course, the Christmas tree lighting, uh, Saturday, December first, and Mayor Marion will give us the time on that thing. Uh, upcoming holidays, Town Hall will be closed on Veterans Day, Monday, November twelfth. Make sure you get out to vote November sixth. And we're not adjourning tonight's meeting, we're moving into an executive session, so I think that's all the business we have for the board right now. So we will adjourn into a executive session.
Not adjourned.
Okay, so...
Will there be any announcement after the executive session?
Tonight.
Okay.
She's asking if you should stick around, and, uh...
At the next meeting, we'll...
And the executive session's about what?
To discuss, as we always, personnel, and so, so, um, could I make a motion to go into an executive session?
I make a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we're going into executive session. Thank you, Dave.
Okay.